Good evening. Welcome to the Kent City Council meeting for October 18, 2022. If you could all please rise and join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Kim, could you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor Ralph?
Here.
Council President Boyce?
Here.
Councilmember Fincher?
Here.
Councilmember Corr?
Here.
Councilmember Larmour?
Here.
Councilmember Michelle?
Here.
Councilmember Thomas? Councilmember Troutner?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes? All right. Seeing none, a motion would be in order to approve the agenda as published.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Agenda stands as published. All right, we will move into public communications. We have two items actually under public recognition or community events this evening before we move into our public safety report. The first one is a proclamation for Hindu American Awareness and Appreciation Month. I've got Ramakrishna and Vamshi ready that are going to be joining us to accept the proclamation. I'll go ahead and read it and then have you come up to the podium and say a few words. Whereas the city of Kent is home to a significant Hindu American population and approximately 3.4 million Hindu Americans live across the nation, and whereas Hindu Americans in Kent represent diverse ethnic backgrounds, including the individuals of India, Pakistan, Bangladesh, Malaysia, Indonesian, Afghani, Nepali, Bhutanese, Sri Lankan, Fujian, Caribbean, and European descent, and whereas Kent and our nation have greatly benefited from Hindu Americans, especially through the-- Thank you-- --philosophy, Ayurvedic medicine, classic Indian art, dance, music, meditation, yoga, literature, and community service, and whereas the year 2022 marks the 129th anniversary when Hinduism was officially introduced to the United States by Swami-- Thank you, Councilmember-- --at the 1893 World's Parliament of Religions in Chicago, Illinois, and the 122nd anniversary of when he founded the Vandanta Society in San Francisco, California in 1900, and whereas most Hindu immigrants have come to the United States as students in search of better economic opportunities or to unite with family members, while others have arrived in this country after facing religious persecution in their countries of origin, and whereas Hindu Americans share the entrepreneurial spirit of America and contribute to Kent's economic vitality, growth, and well-being, and whereas Kent Hindu temples, organizations, and individuals actively engage in Seva and Sanskrit word for selfless service towards their fellow human beings through charity and public service, and whereas despite their positive contributions to Kent and the nation, Hindu Americans face stereotypes and misconceptions about their heritage and have been the targets of bullying, discrimination, hate speech, and bias-motivated crimes, and whereas Hindu Americans promote the ideals of tolerance, pluralism, and religious freedom, which are inherent to their beliefs and respect the diversity of all faiths, now therefore I, Dana Ralph, Mayor of Kent, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2022 to be Hindu American Awareness and Appreciation Month in Kent, Washington, in order to increase awareness and understanding of the Hindu American community and to encourage all residents to recognize and acknowledge the significant contributions made by Kent residents of Hindu heritage to our city.
Thank you, Mayor.
My honor to present the proclamation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, we want to come to the--
Better lighting.
They all should come up and get a picture. Everybody come get in the picture.
Yeah, like all the way over here.
Namaste. Thank you very much for giving this opportunity to us. On behalf of Board of Kent Hindu Temple and Hindu American Community in Kent and other nearby cities, we thank you Mayor Dana Ralph, city councilors, and city staff for processing and awarding this proclamation during this festive season of Navaratri and Diwali. However, in some parts of the world, there is a rising presence of Hinduophobia that deliberately misinterprets Hinduism. Overall, there is simply a lack of education about our worldwide living faith of more than a billion people. Your recognition of October as Hindu Awareness and Appreciation Month is an important milestone for the self-esteem of many Hindu citizens of Kent. This proclamation sends an impactful and meaningful message to the Hindu American community in Kent and adjacent cities. We gratefully accept your appreciation. Over the last few years, there has been significant growth of Hindu Americans in region, and we have been contributing to all aspects of public life, to our vibrant and diverse social fabric. It would bring the residents immense pride and gratitude to know the city recognizes the contribution of Hindu Americans here. On behalf of the Kent Hindu Temple, we look forward to strengthening close relationship and coordinate community interactions with city council to serve the community together. Thank you again for proclamation, and we look forward to continued engagement with city council on various community services initiatives. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor Dana Ralph, and the city council members. Very happy to see a very diverse council members here. I mean, we work with multiple cities in Washington State, but very happy to see diverse city council members here. The credit goes to the leader for you. First of all, we'd like to thank you on behalf of Hindu American community that, you know, we accept this proclamation, and we thank Mayor Dana Ralph and the city council members and the Kent staff. This proclamation sends an impactful and meaningful message to the Hindu American community in greater Kent area and helps educate all Americans about our incredible traditions. Over the last few years, there has been a significant growth of Hindus Americans in this region. It would bring the residents immense pride and gratitude to know that the city recognizes the contributions of Hindu Americans here. If you have seen during the pandemic, we have done 24, every month we have done a food rite for the homeless, and then from last 10 to 12 years, we have been doing a blanket rite for the homeless. We are supporting the homeless shelters. We are supporting women's shelters in a multiple directions in Kent as well as in around, you know, different cities in Washington State. I'm happy to share that Hindu American community in collaboration with the various community organizations like HSS, Seva USA, Kent Hindu Temple, BAPS, WATA, TTA, and HAF is engaged in driving service initiative called Seva Diwali, a food donation campaign during this festive season in Kent, and contribute back to local food banks and the underserved inner neighborhoods. Thank you once again for the proclamation. Thank you for recognizing the Hindu Americans here. We're looking forward to work with the Kent city and city council members. Thank you very much.
Earlier this year, I had the opportunity to attend an event at Kent Commons. It was an amazing day of arts and culture. There were performances by youth and just an educational opportunity to learn, and I was there. There was officials from the school district. Want to say that I am very grateful for those opportunities to help be able to learn and understand who's a part of our community and the amazing work that you all are doing. So thank you so much. Councilmember Corr.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to wish the members here from the Hindu American Happy Diwali. Diwali is actually on Monday, October 24, and I hope the council will actually join in celebrations happening across South King County here in Kent as well, because Hindus and Sikhs and various other cultures celebrate Diwali in their own ways on Monday this weekend. So it's supposed to be a very festive celebration happening. So, thank you.
I will take that opportunity. Thank you so much for the segue. I was forwarded today by one of our local sweet shop owners, Punjab Sweets, an article that was in the New York Times featuring the work of Punjab Sweets and the celebration of Diwali. So I'm very excited that we're getting that kind of notoriety and that one of our local restaurants is, that's a pretty big deal being in the New York Times. So, excited about that. All right, we are going to move on. The next item I have under public recognition, I'd like to call Eileen Lampfair up. She is here this evening to introduce all of us to the new executive director of the Greater Kent Historical Society, Dylan Hi. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Eileen.
Thank you, Mayor Ralph, and to the city council members. Joining me also somewhere is Michael Johnson, who is our treasurer. There he is. So the last time I was before you, I was part of a presentation to bring you up to date on the strategic plan that was going to show us a roadmap into the next six years. And at that time, I also thanked you for your continued support, especially during the pandemic. You continued to give us the grants from the city so that we can keep going on. It was a huge vote of confidence that the board was taking on to reimagine, to reinvent, and to bring some relevance to all of our communities in Kent. Part of our future was to best represent the city and to be a true representation of Kent, and part of that goal was to become a truly professional organization with industry standards, with best practices implemented. And our very first step was to hire a professional executive director. Took us a couple of rounds, but we have hired the best, the brightest, and the most committed person, not only to the Greater Kent Historical Society, but to the city of Kent. And so it is truly an honor and a privilege for me to introduce to the mayor and councilman and to the public, Dylan Hi. He is our new executive director of the Greater Kent Historical Society. Dylan?
Thank you, Eileen. Thank you, Mayor Ralph, and council members. As Eileen said, my name is Dylan Hi, and it's an honor to be stepping into this leadership role with the Greater Kent Historical Society and the Kent Museum. As an organization, we are here to inspire members of our Kent community to explore the history and stories of this place and its people. Our experiences today are shaped by this rich history, and there is so much we can uncover, share, and learn from, whether that's exploring individual stories of many of the great athletes from here in Kent, digging into the history of industries and advances like the Boeing Lunar Rovers that were assembled here, or grappling with the evolving and sometimes challenging history of our struggle to expand our conception of what the city is and who it represents. This history is not held only by the museum, but also resides in everyone that calls this city home and in the experiences that we share with one another. Your stories are our stories, and we welcome you to share these so we can learn together. The museum is grateful to be part of this Kent community, and personally, it's a privilege to be able to serve this city and to preserve and to educate our history for now and for future generations. I welcome you all to stop by the Kent Museum, to explore the space, and to talk further. I'm also happy to come and meet with anyone here or in the community that would like to talk about how we can work together to share the diverse stories and history of the Kent community. You'll probably start seeing me pop up around events throughout the city, and I'm happy to come and join where you see fitting. For those of you that are interested in preserving history and doing work, maybe within your own community, to preserve the history of your own family or the organizations you work with, we are having a free event this Saturday at the Kent Commons, starting at 9:30. It is called "We Are the History Keepers", and it's a workshop we're working in partnership with the Ethnic Heritage Council, UW Libraries for Culture, and the City of Seattle Office of Arts and Culture. So you can find out more information, and if you'd like to join, there's information on our Facebook page. Once again, thank you, and I look forward to working together with all of you for the betterment of the city of Kent. Thank you.
Welcome, Dylan. We are very, very excited. I know you've been in the role for just a little bit, but thank you so much for coming to council tonight. Eileen, thank you for all of the work that you and the board and the members of the Historical Society have been doing over the last couple of years. I really believe we are at the point, we are going to start seeing what all of that planning work has gotten us, and I'm excited to have that opportunity again. Dylan, welcome. All right, we are going to move on to community events. It's a perfect segue. We heard about an event happening on Saturday. Council President Boyce, any other events?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So the Cecil Showware Center have a couple of events coming up. On October 22, we have the Thunderbird versus Spokane. We got Disney's Own Ice Road Trip Adventure, October 26 through the 30. We got Los Tegres Notre Reunion Tour, Friday, November 4. 100.7 The Wolf Hometown Holidays on December 9. Tacoma Stars Home Opener is on Saturday, December 10, and we have the Gary Allen Ruthless Tour, which will be Friday, January 13, 2023. So those are the events going on at Cecil Showware Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have our Spotlight Series kicking off on the 22nd. That's this Saturday, and the Spotlight Series events are going to be held up at Kent Meridian High School. This particular one will feature Darling Side, which is an indie folk band, and it's going to start at 7:30. Tickets are still available, so you can get your tickets and show up there, or there's a whole series. So for instance, in December, there's going to be Celtic Christmas, so the Magical Strings. If you like folk music, if you like R&B, if you like Celtic music, there's going to be something that you will enjoy, so check out the Spotlight Series.
Thank you, Councilmember Fincher. Councilmember Michelle?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There is a Kent Parks Volunteer Conservation Event on Saturday, October 29, from 9 to noon at Mill Creek Canyon and Earthworks Park. So anyone who is interested about that can look for that information online.
Hopefully, the smoke has cleared. We had an event this last Saturday that was canceled because of the smoke, so unable to have that Orca Recovery Day partnership, but fingers crossed for better weather for the next event. All right, we are going to move on. Next item on our agenda is our public safety report, and joining us is Chief Padilla.
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. It's my pleasure to bring you tonight's report. I know we've got a big topic item tonight, so I did keep this relatively short, so, and it's good news. So I want to start off by announcing a chief's award for citizen commendation to Security Officer Jerry Gonzalez. Jerry was supposed to be here tonight, not working, but he got called into work, so he is not with us tonight, and we will get with him at a later time. But I did want to inform you of some of the actions he took to help our officers back in July. We were up at the, we were called to the Fred Meyer's Unpacked Highway for a person in the restroom shoplifting was refusing to leave the store. Officers Moorefoot and Caler responded, and they were in the process of escorting the mail out of the store when he became belligerent and started to physically resist. At one point, he struck Officer Moorefoot, and so there was a bit of a struggle that ensued. That struggle ended up on the ground, and it was getting to a point where they weren't getting control of the mail very easily. Security Officer Jerry Cortez stepped in, at risk to himself, didn't have to do this, and got in there and insisted our officers to gain control and helped him pin one of his arms to the ground. Collectively, they were able to overcome resistance of the suspect and get him handcuffed. And so we are recognizing that effort tonight by Security Officer Cortez, and he's being commended for his intervention in helping our officers. So wanted to make notice of that. Next up, we had the honor, I have the honor and privilege of announcing a very prestigious award that was given to one of our very own. Sergeant Eric Tong, our recruiting and hiring sergeant, was awarded the International Association of the Chief Police 40 Under 40 Award. And what this is, is different departments from around the world submit hundreds of nominations for up-and-coming leaders in the profession. As the title says, they have to be under 40, and they have to be transformational leaders in our industry, moving us forward, doing things that exemplify extraordinary commitment to the profession of law enforcement. And of the hundreds of nominations, Officer Tong was chosen as one of the 40. So we were invited to the conference and the breakfast ceremonies. That picture there on the right, and he was awarded that ceremony, awarded that trophy there with his wife, and Assistant Chief Kazner and I got to attend the ceremony. It was very, very, very cool to see. Some of the primary criteria used to select candidates is that they demonstrated capacity to lead and help shape our profession, like I said. If you recall, we've had Sergeant Tong up here for several awards. He's just that kind of guy. His assignments have included patrol, team leader. He was a K-9 unit at one point, civil disturbance team, neighborhood response team. I mean, I can go on and on in his brief career. But most notably recently, two major things got him this honor. He has really elevated our officer wellness and peer support program. If you don't know, he has his own podcasts, and he's nationally followed and is out teaching wellness and healthy living and resiliency for law enforcement and their family. And the other side, and will be the next topic that I discuss, is he, along with other leaders in the department, have really reshaped our hiring and recruiting. It's phenomenal. It's amazing what can happen when you get the old guy like me out of the way and put young, new leaders in there and watch them go. It's incredible. So can't speak highly of him. Want to thank Commander Andy Grove, who wrote the nomination for him. And yeah, very, very proud accomplishment, so.
Gee, that's a good-looking picture of you as well, too. I like that.
Thanks. I appreciate the compliment. I'd like to be a little smaller in there. That's okay. Thank you. Thank you. All righty, so congratulations to Sergeant Tong. So that leaves me in the hiring. I have really good news. So it makes me feel a little giddy to announce tonight that we have set a new hiring record for police officers in our city. In previous years, a good year, we would average about seven hires, and we just hit 32 police officers hired this year. Yeah, I'm very, very glad. Of the 163 positions, 166 positions we have, 163 are now filled, and we have three unfilled spots. And I'm also really glad to say we have three unconditional offers that we expect to sign here shortly. So we have closed the gap, for sure. So it's a team effort I'll talk about here, but that's what it looks like. So in addition to the 32 officers, we did hire three corrections officers-- So in addition to the 32 officers, we did hire three corrections officers, one parking enforcement officer, one evidence custodian, and one record specialist. So the hiring and recruiting team has been busy. That right there represents a little, right around 30% of our patrol uniform that's been backfilled. So good on that. And it was, the philosophy was very different. I came back from that Conference of the International Association of Chiefs of Police, got to speak to chiefs from around the country, some from around the world, and we are definitely bucking the trend. Most agencies are still seeing double-digit vacancies in terms of percentages and are having a very difficult time moving the needle and getting caught up. The theme in Kent was, let's get out and build relationships. The amount of hustle, the amount of time spent, I can't tell you how many tours occur in our department, the relationship building, the travel, and it's been all hands. But a special note to Commander Andy Grove, Sergeant Eric Tong, and Officer Brian Cortinas for the recruiting efforts. Also, special recognition to our background investigators, because that is a ton of work that goes into making sure we do our vetting appropriately. So that's Officer Justin Davis and Officer Eric Workman. And then a whole host of other people that went out there, the presentations. We held clinics on how to do push-ups, and how to pass the physical, and how to take oral boards. And we have departments calling us now, trying to figure out what we're doing, and we were a little slow in giving them our trade secrets, so they're catching up now. So looking at the numbers, just briefly there, you can see 10 of those 32 hires are people of color, which represents 31% of our hires this year. And seven are females, which represents 21%. So if you were, prior to this, our numbers were just over 9%. So we are turning the page, we are working really, really hard. So collectively, that's a 52% change in what we have, so very proud of that. 52% of our newly hired officers are represented, and that should be.
Can I make a comment, Madam Mayor? I just want to, I think we need to point that out, because I think, you know, we as councilmen, we have talked about quite some time about really making sure, you know, that our police officers represent in the community that we live in, and I think wherever you is at, compared to where we are today, really, definitely, you took that, you know, to heart, and I think kudos to you and your recruitment team for really making a strong effort for doing that. So I just want to make sure you get recognized for that, because we have talked about doing that, and congratulations, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, it really is the team. I got to give it to them. So amazing, amazing work. So we aren't declaring victory yet, a little disclaimer here at the end. We know there will be some attrition, we have some anticipated separations in the department, retirements, medical and all that. And so, and also, I also want to always remind people, most of those bright shiny faces there will not be able to do solo patrol until sometime next year. So it takes a while to get them trained up, but we have closed the gap, we still will continue to work hard, and this gives us, this gets us closer to restoring some of the community-based services that we weren't able to fill for the last year and a half. All right, so really, really good news. And that concludes my report. Unless there are any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for the chief? I too want to congratulate the team on the hiring. It's been incredible. I get to see out my window some of those tours that are happening, and I look, and I'm like, okay. And you can see lots of smiles on the potential new employees' faces in that interaction, and we've all been able to witness the team at community events, working with little kids, getting them encouraged to the profession, and then working through with folks that ultimately apply. So thank you for that. And then exclamation point on, this is the beginning of this journey. We're a year before we see a lot of, especially the new recruits on the street. So community, thank you for your patience. Know that we are doing absolutely everything, and it's working.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. All right, we are going to move on to reports. Every single person that you see sitting up on this dais spends time outside of council meetings and committee meetings, working to make sure that Kent's voice is represented at the regional and state level. It's extremely important that we are at the table as a part of those decision-making processes. So when policies are being set at the regional and state level, as well as funding recommendations, a variety of things come from that engagement, and it does take a significant amount of time, but very, very grateful to our council for their willingness to engage outside of council meetings. I am going to start quickly with a couple of committees that I serve on, mostly transportation-related. So last week, we had our Transportation Policy Board meeting, continuing to work through our regional transportation plan, and we did have an update on the climate work that's happening at the regional level and things that we are going to be tracking, as well as an update on a dashboard that's being set up by the Transportation Policy Board and Puget Sound Regional Council. If you get a chance to go to Puget Sound Regional Council's website, all kinds of detailed information on traffic patterns, how people are traveling, as well as demographics, all of the things that go into the decision-making process at the policy and regional level. It's really very interesting if you're interested in data and how things work. Today, I was on the South County Area Transportation Board, or Skateboard. We had a presentation from the Port of Seattle on the work that they're doing and some of the upgrades that they're seeing at Sea-Tac Airport. So if you haven't traveled in a while, I think you will be pretty impressed with the work that the port is doing at the airport, as well as some future planning. If you have been to the airport lately, you know that those lines for drop-offs and pickups are extremely long, and so we talked about the ways that they're going to be streamlining not only signage, but adding some additional capacity to those lanes. So good work on behalf of the port. Also sit on the Regional Policy Committee, and we had two presentations last week. The first one was the impact of pro sports on your community. It was pre the Mariners game, that was six hours or 18 hours or how many ever hours. I know that I didn't watch, but I kept checking the score, and it felt like it went forever. But really good presentation on what, on the value and just the amount of revenue that having professional sports bring, not just to Seattle, but to the entire region. So interesting presentation there. And then we also had a presentation from the Tucson Crisis Receiving Center, so you've all heard me talk a little bit about that trip that the chief and I were able to make. I continue to be committed to work with both the county and the state on making sure that our residents have access to this honestly life-saving facility. So crisis stabilization, anyone can walk in through that front door that's in a behavioral health crisis, and they spend time to stabilize people and then connect them to the community for services. So the return rate at the facility is less than 1%, which when you think about, you know, the length of times that it takes to stabilize somebody that is in a mental health crisis, and then the ability to connect to services, it's really impressive. So Representative Tina Orwal is doing a lot of work around this, as well as King County, and I am very committed to make sure that Kent stays engaged at those conversations. Finally, I want to say a little shout-out to KM, Kent Meridian. Councilmember Thomas is not here to support me in the Go Royals, but I'm going to say that. Had a chance to go up, right? We've got to love that Go Royals. Was invited to go up and spend the lunch period with students at KM to talk about what their plans are post-high school, so what they're thinking about, whether it be straight-to-work, certificate program, apprenticeship, or on to college. And I always enjoy the opportunities to hear from our students on what their paths are and what their needs are. I think they're much better than any other generation at articulating exactly what they need. And taking the time to listen really helps those of us that are in the position of providing some of those services to know, as opposed to, you know, we just know better. So always grateful for that opportunity to work with our students. I will end my report there and turn it over to Council, excuse me, I will turn it over to Fitzpatrick. I do that every single time.
That's all right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Council. Just a couple of quick notes. As you know, we had a very productive budget workshop on October 5th, and we're on target to adopt the budget on, at the November 15th council meeting. Other than that, we have no executive session tonight, and my report is in the agenda packet, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Now I will turn it over to Council President Boyce.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last, two weeks ago, I mentioned about the Sound Cities Association were looking for to hire a CEO, and we hired him, David Hoffman. I think we all know David, have worked with David before in the past, and he is very well-known in the regional, so I think he definitely is going to hit the ground running. And of course, there's no replacement for Deanna, but if I have to find somebody to replace Deanna, I think he's the right person to really take us to the next level. So we're very excited to have him start, I think he starts right around the first part of November. So real excited to have David to be the new CEO of Sound Cities Association. We just had a couple of conversations, just want to share, there's no real action, but just something you may, as time goes on, we'll be taking action on these issues. But we talked about the Behavior Crisis Care Center levy, that's one of the conversations going on right now, proposal. Also had some conversation on the Climate Change and Comprehensive Planning. We talked about the 2023 SCA legislation, so I'm sure we'll be looking at that pretty soon for us, our plan going forward in 2023. We also looked at the Regional Homeless Five-Year Plan, and then the last one was the Hazard Waste Management Coordination. So those are all discussions, no action, but I will keep you posted as we get close to making some action and seek your recommendation as we move forward to vote on the items. I am going to start here to my, oh, my council report, yeah, I'm sorry, yes. We did have a workshop today, and we also have operation meeting, and for the most part, our operation meeting, we just had some, we paid the bills, and looked at our August 2022 financial report, and we are tracking pretty good, so in pretty good shape. And then for our workshop meeting, we, as our CEO talked about the budget, we did have a brief presentation of the budget, because we had seen it quite a few times already. So, and then we have put quite a few new systems in place over the last couple of years. One was Workday, which is a HR finance system, so we got an update on that, that's looking pretty good. Is Amanda is another one, which is for if you are going to be building a commercial residential home, that's the system that they use. In the past, you used to come to City Hall, back and forth, back and forth, now you can do that all online. Then the last one was the Laserfish is another one that we also implement. So big investment that we put into those systems, really try to make things a little more efficient for you as a user, and I think the team, along with IT, have done a phenomenal job of putting those systems in place to make things easier for you as a customer. With that said, I'm going to look to my left, and Councilmember Michelle, please want to share something with us, please?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I serve as the Parks and Human Services Committee Chair, and at our October meeting, I was joined by Councilmember Fincher. And we had two topics. The first one was the East Hill North Community Park Engagement Update Plan. You may also know that as the Hughes property. We got a brief on their efforts to engage the community, and big kudos to the Parks Department. They actually spoke to or heard from 634 people so far on that. And up next, there will be some site plans out so that the public can give comment on those. And you can go to EngageKentParks.com to look at those. The second item was a purchase of play equipment and amenities from Morrel Meadows Park. So Morrel Meadows Park will be getting a pretty cool-looking playground sometime in the near future, and we approve that. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Michelle. Councilmember Cora.
Thank you, Council President. I serve as the Caucus Chair for Growth Management Planning Council, and we did have our meeting, and we talked more about countywide planning policies and greenhouse gas reduction targets. We also had discussion on affordable housing options and looking at options one and two. And if you are not familiar with that, it's looking at, you know, if a city should be, it's looking at, there's three options. Is there as-is option, there's an option of, you know, making all cities equitable, as in all cities are building same amount of affordable housing, which makes no sense. Or there's an option of, you know, if Kent has these many affordable housing already, and Bellevue does not, so Bellevue needs to pick it up, and Kent should be focusing on the options of housing they don't have available in the county. And seems like option two and three, which is, third option, is also all cities are building same number of affordable housing. So I think a lot of cities are agreeing with the, where, you know, we have affordable housing, we have to maintain, what do we have, and if cities that do not, they should be contributing more. So it seems like that's where the conversation is going, but we will see where it ends up towards the end of this year, so we'll be making a decision on that. And Councilmember Larmour actually sits on Affordable Housing Committee, so she knows more about this. So we had a great discussion on that. I also attended K4C's workshop they had last week, and we had great conversations on, you know, countywide statistics. We got presentation on how population has grown by 20% in King County, but per-person emissions have reduced by 7%. But overall countywide emissions have grown by 11%, and that is due to various factors, including increased air travel. A lot of cities were participating in this workshop, and we had great presentations from Lake Forest Park and Buren on what they are doing to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and, you know, how we're all going to contribute to working towards our 2050 goal in reducing CO2 carbon emissions. And we also had a presentation on our K4C legislative policies and what they're focusing on next year, what did not pass this year, and, you know, how they're going to make changes to that, and working with our legislators to for clean fuel standards and EVs. And that ends my report. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Cora. We definitely look forward to your leadership, as well as Councilmember Larmour with Affordable Housing, right? So to make sure that things are spread equally, right? So definitely look forward to your leadership. With that said, Councilmember Larmour.
Thank you, Council Chair. So yeah, I serve on the King County Affordable Housing Committee, as well as the Aging and Disabilities Advisory Council. And since my last report, neither committee has met yet again. We'll be having our meetings in the next coming weeks. But to, you know, add to what Councilmember Cora was talking about, there are the three jurisdictional, what is it, jurisdictional accountability options, basically how jurisdictions are going to measure this. And there is, we as the Affordable Housing Committee asked for another month to be able to dive deeper with our staff and better analyze the options that were before us. So we plan on making a recommendation probably towards, you know, towards, I would say, into November, early December to then go to the planning council, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Larmour. Councilwoman Trautner.
Thank you, Council President. I am Chair of the Economic and Community Development Committee. We did not meet in October, but I do sit on the Governance Board for the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority, along with Council President Boyce and Councilmember Thomas. We met on October 5th. Just a couple of things to highlight. Division Chief Pat Pollak was presented with a Distinguished Service Award for his contributions to the organization and for his work as Zone 3 PIO. We also presented an Outstanding Citizen Award to Sean Falsing for assisting during a freeway vehicle collision back in September, and he assisted prior to first responders arriving, so both very well-deserved awards. I am also Vice Chair of the Regional Transit Committee, and we will be meeting tomorrow afternoon. Earlier this year, the Sound Transit Board voted to lower the Orca Lift Low Income Fare from $1.50 to $1 for six months, beginning in September 1st. And to align with those fares, Metro also lowered their Orca Lift fare rates for Metro buses on September 1st. Because that wasn't able to be brought forward to the RTC Committee and the King County Council, we are going to be discussing that tomorrow and extending that possibly through 2023. So more to come on that. I will report on that at the next meeting. That is all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Trautner, thank you. And of course, last but not least, Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you, Council President. We have not had a Public Works Meeting since my last report at the last meeting, and the Mental Illness and Drug Dependency Advisory Committee, same situation, we will be meeting next Thursday. KCD, King Conservation District, we did meet, and we had, our Farm Team Program did their presentation, but a large part of the meeting was spent, as you know, we've been doing strategic planning, we've also been doing some work around, that includes the work we've been doing around equity. So there are two questions the city managers and the mayor should have received by now. The two questions that have been added, that will be part of those questionnaires and the applications when those go out for the multi-jurisdictional grants. the applications when those go out to the, for the multi-jurisdictional grants. And there's also additional explanation as to why those are in there. So teaming with Sound Cities Association to help make sure the word gets out, and that the different cities municipalities have a chance to review those changes before they go into effect, see if any changes are suggested. Public Works, I think I mentioned, we have not had a Public Works Meeting, so that just leaves Arts Commission, and there on the 25th is going to be a grand opening celebration for one of our new parks up on, up on West Hill. So want more information about that, that is on our website. That is it for me to, oh, you know, one other thing. So that's my regular reports, but I also had the opportunity last week to, mentioning the Crisis Stabilization Center, and working with Council, with Representative Orwell, we had a meeting with, was one of the focus groups that we're doing with both the youth and the adults, and the great thing was that the youth were there. We're looking specifically at a center for youth, and so getting their input, and the input of some of the parents, the people with lived experience, there's all sorts of people around the table, people from King County who are therapists, peer count, peer support folks, all sorts of folks. And so that was really good. And I, finally, I'd like to thank Evergreen Middle School and Star Lake Elementary, who had their opening, their opening celebration, the schools had opened, but their opening celebrations over in the Federal Way School District, they invited us because of our work with them and being in the city. And wonderful schools, and the students did a wonderful job, the staffs are energetic and creative, the schools are beautiful, and good things are coming for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fincher. Madam Mayor, ends our report.
All right, thank you, Council President. Right, we're gonna move on to the next item on our agenda, which is public hearings. We have five of them this evening, so this is process intensive. I will go through the, the process, we will receive a brief presentation, and then move on to the next one. So our first public hearing this evening is actually the second public hearing for the 2023 through 2024 biennial budget. Staff will give a presentation, and then I'll invite the public to provide testimony, written statements, and other evidence. Public input must relate to the subject of the public hearing. So if you're here for public comment on anything outside of these public hearings, there is a separate signup sheet for that, up here at the front table. So with that, we will officially open the second public hearing of the 2023-2024 Biennial Budget, and I'll ask Paula Painter to provide her presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Ralph. Good evening, Council President Boyce, members of the City Council. I'm here today with our second public hearing on the 2023-24 Biennial Budget. The mayor presented her biennial budget on September 27th at a special council meeting, and since then, we've held several meetings to go over the biennial budget. The overall biennial budget is $850 million, and of that amount, $234.5 million of that resides in the general fund. When the baseline budget was established, the city looked at the expenditures and applied appropriate increases for salaries based on union contracts, need for increases related to health plans for the 2024 fiscal year, the contribution rates that were applicable to retirement plans, 2% increases for supplies and services, and adjustments to insurance allocations for, for all the workers' comp, liability, and property funds.
Hey Cynthia, I've been waiting all summer for this day, for our fourth annual Cruz and Kent Car Show.
So have I, it's such a pretty day, and there's so many people out.
Got cars from the 30s all the way up through the 2000s, muscle cars, all kinds of fun stuff.
I love it, and a couple of people have said that this is their first time to ever come to a car show.
Great day for a car show, and we're supporting a great cause.
We are the Green River College Vet Fund, and they support vets who can't afford to pay for textbooks, or, you know, need support in some way, so it really is a great cause.
Can't think of a better way to spend a sunny Sunday than checking out some amazing cars, supporting our veterans, just hanging out.
Huge shout out to our sponsors.
Kent Station and all of our sponsors, this would not be possible without them.
And we love our partnership with the City of Kent, so it's really a, it's a great partnership.
And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the public hearing is now closed. All right, we are going to move on to the second public hearing, which is the second public hearing. Seems a little awkward, but it is the second public hearing of the 23-28 Capital Improvement Program. Same rules apply, staff will provide a presentation. This presentation. So with that, we will now open the second public hearing on the Capital Improvement Program for 23 through 28, and I will ask Paula to make the presentation.
Great, thank you very much. All right, so this is the second public hearing of the 2023 through 2028 Capital Improvement Plan. This Capital Improvement Plan is required by the Growth Management Act, which was passed by the state legislature back in 1990. By, one of the requirements of the plan is to create this six-year plan, and so therefore, we have done that, we've provided with this plan, not only projects that would be needed to meet the standard levels of service that we have, but it would also provide methods of financing for those services. And this Capital Improvement Plan, once adopted, will update the city's comprehensive plan. The first two years of this plan is included in the 2023-24 budget. The overall six-year plan is $243 million, with the $109 million within the 2023-24 budget. And that will conclude my presentation.
All right, Council, any questions on the 23 through 28 CIP? All right, seeing none. Kim, do we have any speakers?
We do not.
Okay, with that, a motion would be in order to close the public hearing.
So move.
Got a motion in a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 6-0, we will now close the public hearing. All right, moving on, the next public hearing is the public hearing for the 2022 Tax Levy for the 2023 Budget. Again, same rules apply, staff will give presentation, Council will have an opportunity to ask questions, we will see if there's any speakers. With that, we will go ahead and open the public hearing, and I will ask Paula to provide the presentation.
Great, thank you so much. So this is the one and only public hearing on our property tax levy. Currently, we're working with King County to finalize numbers related to this, but when we are looking at these numbers, the assessed valuation is preliminarily, is the preliminary number, sorry, making up words as I go along here, almost $32 million. It's about an 18 and a half percent increase over the assessed valuation that we saw in 2020.
Describe Kent Parks in three words, I'd say fun, fun, fun.
I would say fun, fun, fun. Why wouldn't you be here?
Our tax levy per median home would come in at $579 per household per year versus the $574 that they are paying now for that median home price. Interestingly enough, the median home price is about the same, however, our tax levy rate is going down. It's estimated at this point to be about $1.05 per 1,000 assessed valuation. And just a reminder to please note that this is only the city's portion of our property tax. The city's portion of the property tax tends to make up about 11% of your overall tax bill, so this really is just a small segment of what you would be seeing. And at this point, I would be happy to take any questions.
Right, any questions for Paula?
I just think it's worth noticing, from the city, they've been pretty consistent, right, when you look at your property tax bill, I mean, you look from 2022 to 2024, it's about a $14 difference. So we've been pretty consistent for us being steward of the taxpayer money. So, thank you.
Thank you, Council President, for pointing that out. I do think it is important to, to recognize, values are set by the assessor's office, that is not a city function. As Paula said, about 11% of your property taxes actually comes directly to the city, over 50% is voter approved. So things that, that people in the county have said yes to, and a bulk of that is actually school, school funding both at the local and the state level. Kim, do we have any speakers signed up?
We do not.
All right. With that, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
A motion in a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, public hearing is closed. The next public hearing we have this evening is a hearing on the Comprehensive Plan Amendment to Incorporate Capital Facilities Plans for Auburn, Kent, and Federal Way School District into the city's capital facilities element and associated school impact fees. Again, the same rules apply, we will hear a presentation, Council will have an opportunity to ask questions, we will invite public comment, and then close the public hearing. So with that, public hearing is now open, and I'd like to ask Kristin Holdsworth to make the presentation.
Thank you, Councilmember Ralph, and Council President Boyce, and Councilmembers, it's great to be here. I'm here to present the incorporation of the school districts' capital facilities elements into our comprehensive plan. This is also required under the Growth Management Act, and occurs simultaneously with the rest of our budget process. However, because it's not directly a budget amendment, it's a comprehensive plan amendment, we only need one hearing. This is an annual process, and we update annually to incorporate the school districts' most recent capital facilities plans. Kent is served by five school districts, but only three participate in this annual update process, and those are Auburn, Federal Way, and Kent School Districts. ...use of the school districts. This is a, a separate request, in the next hearing at Ops, I will be coming to talk about the actual impact fees themselves. All districts are required by the state to have a very complicated formula to assess what their current capacities are, as well as what their growth projections are over the next six years. The school impact fees are a financing tool that the city is responsible for deciding on whether we're going to incorporate and charge, and we can also cap that as we have done in previous years. All of the school districts are working on plans with funds that were established by the 2016 levies, and so they're just continuing to update off of those bonds and levy processes. And the calculation for these fees is in city code, it is derived from a state law, and action is not required tonight, but it does move forward with the rest of the budget process. Generally, Kent, for this students versus actual enrollment right now. And so their fees are actually changing, and they're proposing to have $0 because of that weird state equation, and so they do not need to collect extra impact fees for this upcoming year. They do not, they anticipate that they already have the capacity, and don't need to make substantial improvements beyond what they've already planned for and budgeted for. Auburn, which serves, serves one small part of our city, does, has seen a return of their enrollment to their expected pre-pandemic levels, and their fees are increasing slightly. Notably, Kent and Federal Way, again, are not increasing any of their impact fees. They're actually decreasing them and making them zero, and those are vested to the time of a building permit application. So any building permit that comes in, starting January 1st of 2023, if we adopt the new code with the new impact fees, it'll be January 1st, 2023, until we adopt a new impact fee ordinance. And then the maximum calculation, as I referenced before, it is set to a construction cost index for the Seattle area, and this year it increased by 10.4%. The only school district that this would really apply to this year is Auburn, because they're the only ones proposing to collect impact fees. However, they are not hitting this maximum. So it, it's a number that's set in our code, but we don't need to worry about any adjustments to, to make sure we're not exceeding that maximum. We did not receive a settlement from Highline School District again this year, which has been the precedent for several years in the past. And as I mentioned previously, Renton School District does not have an ILA, and they don't expect many residential developments. I think we counted three parcels with potential in the entire area that they serve. So we have reached out to them and offered if they'd like to establish an ILA for future years to collect impact fees, staff is, is ready and excited to talk to them about that if they decide it's worthwhile. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Kristin, thank you for boiling down a very complicated process. Council, any questions? All right, Kim, do we have anyone signed up to provide public testimony?
We do not.
With that, a motion would be in order to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
A motion in a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, the fourth public hearing is now closed. All right, we are on the last public hearing this evening, and it is Comprehensive Plan Amendment to Incorporate Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority's 2023 through 2028 Capital Improvement Plan into the city's capital facilities element. We will go ahead and open the public hearing, and Kristin, you're on.
Thank you. This, the fire capital facilities improvement plans are very similar to school districts in that they have an annual process where they evaluate the service levels and demands, and then what the needs are for the system over the next six years. I had the joy of working with the Puget Sound Fire representative, and we both were new to this process this year for these jurisdictions, so we learned together on a lot of it. But he was really helpful in explaining some of the history. So pre, in 2020, and really that first, first part of COVID, they saw a huge decrease in service calls and responses, and then everything kind of ramped up, and their service demand and the level of calls regionally, so not just for Kent, but really across all of their service areas. And they're saying this is really a trend throughout the Puget Sound region and nationally. They increased from 2021 onward, and so they did see an increase in demand, but it hasn't substantially affected a lot of their planning efforts. There are some slight increases, no more than about $400 per unit. Some instances, they're seeing actually decreased levels of what they estimated for response calls, and so some of the fees will actually be decreased as well. So it's kind of a toss-up of which type of development is coming in based on the impact fees.
All right, thank you. Council, any questions? All right, Kim, one last time, do we have any speakers signed up?
We do not.
All right, thank you. A motion would be in order to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 6-0, thank you. The final public hearing is closed. All right, a lot of process this evening, and that comes along with budget season. The next item on our agenda is public comment. The public comment period is an opportunity for members of the public to come and speak to the council, or myself, regarding issues related to the business of the City of Kent or agenda items that are up this evening. Comments that don't relate to the City of Kent are not permitted, and additionally, I do want to remind you that Washington state law prohibits the public comment period being used to support or oppose a ballot measure or a candidate for office. When you come up, if you could state your name and city of residence for the record, we do have a three-minute time limit, there will be a timer that's put up on the screen, so you can see where you're at in your allotted time. With that, Kim, could you please call our first speakers?
I have Randall Smith, followed by Tim Brown, followed by Gene Bremner.
Madam Mayor, City Council.
Good evening.
I am here to speak on behalf of the Ordinance Number 4443.
Name and city of residence.
Oh, okay. Randall Smith, Kent, Washington.
Thank you.
All right. We, my wife and I have lived here, I've lived here 36 years, she's been here 32 of those years. And we own several properties here and business here in Kent. We love our city very much, and I have not, in all the years, seen our homeless population grow so much as it has now. I am in favor of the ordinance, but I, I am in favor of making sure that it's just not moving people to move them, that we also seek service and services. people to move them, that we also seek services for them. We seek affordable housing, and I think those things are important. I work a lot in the facility service area, and we do a lot of sweeping at night. There's a lot of homeless out. I've been, my shoe has been stuck with a needle. There is a lot of that going on, especially on the east hill, but also in our city parking lot. Our business is located close to there, and, you know, when I've made calls to the police to come over, from my perspective, the response has been great. They're right there. If we need people trespassed, they're right there. And I'm glad we have more officers. It gives us something more, but I'm also glad of this ordinance. It's going to give them a little more teeth to work with to help move them along. But like I said, we do need to have services in place. Our city is, I would think, very wanting to do that, to help our people that live here. Not everyone is homeless by choice, and so we need to look at that and what we can do to help, whether it's drug addiction or losing their jobs, failed marriages, whatever it is. We need to reach out and find out what those things we can do to help. That's what we should do as a community. So I would ask that this ordinance be moved forward and that we never take our hearts and our minds off of helping other people. I think that's the most important thing that we look at in this. So thank you.
Thank you.
Her next speaker is Tim Brown, followed by Gene Bremner.
And if I could ask the audience to hold applause or comment during public comment, that would be great. Thank you.
My name is Tim Brown. I'm a city of Kent resident. You all know me as Tim the Trailman for my over seven years of working on the Mill Creek Canyon Trails, and I'm here in support of the camping ban for our parks and green spaces. In 2020, we spent over $619,000 cleaning up the homeless encampments in just the Mill Creek Canyon alone. That doesn't count over a million that spent every year cleaning up the different parks we have from the damage done by homeless encampments. The amount of injection needles that are found everywhere, the endless amount of bottles of alcohol containers, these are such a costly thing, and we do need this ordinance to move forward so that we can take better action, protect our parks and green spaces, so we don't have to keep spending the amount of money we do on homes and campers. We need to be able to give the police the ability to get in there and deal with Rodney faster. So Rodney is not, we all know Rodney, the arsonist who goes in the canyon. He's camping there now, been there for about a month or more, and he's been destructive. So I'm here in support of this and want to encourage you all to put it forward and that the police get behind it, prosecutors get behind it, so we can keep our parks safe for Kent citizens to use. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Gene Bremner, followed by Michael Shapznikoff, and then Kelly Crawford.
My name is Gene Bremner from Kent, Washington. I'm here to support your cleanup of the parks and the whole town. We've got, this country's just turned into a mess, and it started with people that are promoting drugs, our state legislature, our county legislature, our city of Seattle, and I don't want to see Kent falling in the same steps. And, you know, drugs started, then the people don't work, then they get homeless, and then they go and steal. You go around Kent here, maybe some of you don't get around, but about every building's got their doors knocked in, and there's a piece of plywood over them. And we don't prosecute anybody that steals under $1,000 bucks, so they know they aren't going to get prosecuted. So we have to get the prosecution going and get this stuff straightened out. I lost $7,000 worth of tools, and I had to quit my home maintenance job. The wife says, "We're not going to go through that anymore." And I had to spend several thousand on home security, and a lot of you probably out there have been spending a lot of money on home security. We shouldn't have to do that. So that's my deal, is a kid cleaning up the parks and that and spend some of my tax money.
Thank you. Next speaker is Michael Shapznikoff, followed by Kelly Crawford, followed by TJ Peterson.
My name is Michael Shapznikoff, and I am an Auburn resident, but I work here in the city of Kent five days out of the week. I work for a local nonprofit peer support organization, and I work with the houseless population on a daily basis. We don't have the infrastructure. We don't have the services to help these people right now. I'm very concerned with the way that this ordinance is written right now. There already is an ordinance in place that gives the police these teeth, right? But it's written now where if they don't have services somewhere to help these people go to, right, shelter and things like that, they can't arrest them, or they, you know, they can't move them. And now with this new ordinance, that's what we're giving them the power to do. We don't have the infrastructure. We don't have the services set up to actually help these people. So what we're going to be doing is pushing them out of the city of Kent or arresting them. Those are their options at that point. These are people too. They're not all out there by choice. They're not all drug addicts. They're not all thieves. A lot of them are actively trying to get help. They are actively seeking shelter. I'm in the thick of it, you know? I have a hard time finding shelter for a lot of these people, and we're coming into the winter months where the shelters that we do have now, and not in the Kent area, the Kent area shelters are full, okay? We're talking about sending them out to Seattle or somewhere else, right, where they don't have a choice where they get to go. These are Kent residents. They live here. They may not have a house, but this is their home. So all of the reporting that I've seen on this ordinance talks about this being done with compassion, and I'm just not seeing or hearing the compassion in this. There's no compassion in forcing people out, okay? A lot of these people, they're not here by choice. They're not living this way by choice, and we need services. We need to be helping them, not forcing them out of the city or arresting them, criminalizing them, simply for living outside. Tonight, I ask you guys to vote no against this ordinance. I ask you to vote with compassion, okay? Thank you, that's all I got.
Next speaker is Kelly Crawford, followed by TJ Peterson, followed by Elijah Wiggins.
Hello, I'm Kelly Wiggins Crawford from Kent. I'm here to put a face to the people who are directly impacted by the homeless encampments. I am not callous nor unfeeling towards those in our community who have fallen into homelessness. However, I cannot continue to be told I need to accept encampments in my neighborhood by those who are not confronted with it on their doorstep. I am frustrated that their rights are more important than my own and that they are allowed to infringe on my well-being, my safety, as well as that of my family and my neighbors. I purchased my condo on the Green River over 20 years ago. About 10 years ago, homeless encampments started popping up along the river. The first year, the city came out to clean them up and found 11 elaborate camps dug into the levee, which was constructed to protect property and lives from the river flooding. It took eight dumpsters to clean out the waste, trash, human feces, and other debris left behind from the camps. In the following years, the homeless have made it nearly impossible for people to utilize the public trail behind our homes along the river. The homeless have threatened people with weapons, stolen property, confronted people walking their dogs, and intimidated families who fled the trail. There was the naked homeless man who passed out along the trail, and another who stood on the trail masturbating. The homeless have set up camps crossing the trail, preventing people from using it. They have set fires dangerously close to our homes. Neighbors have had homeless men wander into their homes high and confused. They have dropped used needles where our neighbor's six-year-old daughter picked one up. The homeless are trashing what was once a beautiful scenic area and creating an unsafe environment for the members of our community. So the next time someone advocates for homeless, remember, they have an agenda, and no regard for those of us impacted by the homeless camps. Moreover, I do not accept being asked to forego my safety, the safety of my family and my neighbors, to allow homeless to continue to camp in public spaces. I don't think they need to be tucked away or put out of sight, as many have alleged, but we cannot allow them to continue to destroy public spaces that have been set aside for public use, endanger our community, or continue to lay waste to areas where habitat is protected or endangered. They have no respect for their surroundings, but we are expected to respect them. Respect is earned, not given. Lastly, I have read the proposed ordinance and Martin v. Boise. Martin does not prevent cities from banning camping outside in public spaces. Martin states that cities cannot enforce an ordinance banning camping outside when there are no beds available. The court stated, "As long as there is no option of sleeping indoors, the government cannot criminalize indigent homeless people for sleeping outdoors on public property on the false premise that they had a choice in the matter." Martin is not the all-out ban on camping many have claimed. I, for one, am eager to see how our city deals with providing beds to meet the requirements in Martin. We need this ordinance to help restore balance and safety within our community, not only for ourselves, but for the homeless. Thank you.
Our next speaker is TJ Peterson, followed by Elijah Wiggins.
My name's TJ Peterson. I live in Kent. Mayor, Council President, councilors, thank you for the time. Regarding the camping ordinance, considering where we're at, yeah, it's necessary. The services that people have talked about, a lot of good people in this community, Mr. Rogers called some of the helpers. The infrastructure, our housing shortage, we have a K-HOP plan. We have a strategic homeless plan that's been on paper for a couple of years. There's a lot of people that talk about their services available. That's pretty much the end of the discussion. There needs to be shelter. There needs to be drug treatment upon demand. There needs to be zoning changes. There needs to be more housing, maybe housing trust. Market race housing, when it became an investment, cheap rent solves a lot of problems. Let's talk about the criminal issues. Let's look at the police department. We've gotten more police officers. We have our own judge. We have our own prosecutors. I hear littering. I hear thieves. I hear public indecency and harassment. Yes, there's criminals out here on the streets. There's also a lot of people out here, medical issues, divorces, financial issues. The housing has run over a lot of people. I hear people talking about teachers can't get a place to live. Landlords, bless their hearts, there's some really great landlords out there that are providing a service. There's also landlords out there that are doing nothing but trying to make money and rent-seeking and taking things off the market, Airbnb. So K-HOP, the housing program, middle housing, I've heard talk about that. I've heard about inclusive zoning, that when we have housing built, we can do something different. Not everybody needs a single-family home. People need maybe small apartments. We need density. We need rail. Yes, we need, we've got Valley Cities here. We have so many partners, the faith-based community. This camping ordinance, it's gotten out of hand because, yeah, there's crime. We need police out there that are going to be overseers. We need police that are going to be guardians for some of the poorest amongst us. We need the police. I have friends that have died out in camps. I've lived in camps. I've had a head injury. I don't even want to get into that. Let's talk about what our community can do. Kent's a pretty resourceful community, full of smart people. We can do this. If we host programs, there's truckloads of support from the county, from the state. Pass this ordinance. Let's look to the police to solve the criminal issues with the criminals who basically prey on the homeless people. Nobody wants to talk about the dead bodies that end up in the woods every year. I'd love to know what the number is of the people who actually died unsheltered. Okay, that's a big thing right there. Let me use the last few minutes here. Let's come back and revisit this in six months, see how these ordinances are doing. The graffiti ordinance, the drug use in public ordinance, the camping ordinance, six months, how are we doing? Maybe next October, we can talk about this and hold our councilors accountable to see if this plan actually works. Thank you.
Our last speaker is Elijah Wiggins.
I mainly came up here to ask more about the job opportunities that can be opened up due to this new bill that is being proposed for the homeless. Since these homeless that are going to be reformed due to our going into these reformed systems, would we be building houses on the side for these people to move into so they have an easier time getting an address so they can get jobs and boost the local economy? And also, are we going to get more resource officers to help go around and get more homeless people off the streets, along with the police officers that are going to be enforcing the no camping on public properties?
This is the hard part about public comment. Everybody up here gets to take it in. We don't do an engagement during public comment, but if you want to reach out to my office, I'd be very happy to connect you with myself or our Human Services Division that can answer those very specific questions.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have one more person signed up to speak, Charles Tompkins.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilpeople. This is the first time I've had public speaking experience, so I apologize in advance for if I start stuttering. I've lived in Kent for 39 years, excuse me, 29 years, excuse me, 29 years. I have seen nothing in the last four or five years but continued abuse of our parks, continued abuse of our public spaces. I drive into Seattle every day. I've worked in Kent for a lot of years, but I drive into Seattle every day, and as I come back, it sickens me to see the different parks and whatnot, the different public spaces that are being abused by the homeless or the people that are quote-unquote camping. I don't believe in that term camping. I believe that there's a lot of people that are just there for whatever reason. Now, I understand, I need compassion, and I am compassionate for people to get better and to help them. I think the ordinance, I believe there should be the ordinance. I think it should be changed. I appreciate it being brought up to us. There is a big crisis, not just in homelessness. I don't really believe in homelessness as much as I am. There's an illness problem, whether it's a mental illness, whether it's drugs, whether it's abusiveness, there is an illness there. We need to continue to work hard to break that chain that continues to go on. But I, myself, I live on the south side of Kent Meridian, or excuse me, Kent Cangley, from the park, from Kent, Lake Meridian Park, and I have been broken into multiple times. Last year, I absorbed $1,000 in equipment fees. I'm a hobby of umpiring, and I had to go replace all of my umpire equipment because somebody broke into my car, and I'm not going to put it on my insurance because it's going to raise my rates. But anyway, the long and the short of it is, I definitely 100% support the ordinance, but also I want to continue to work on the compassion side of our community and continue to work with the people who need the help, the ones that refuse to go into shelters and stuff. They should not be here in our city. They should not be in our parks. Let them leave our city. It's a beautiful city. We're going to continue to keep it beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no additional speakers.
All right, so that will bring us to the end of public comment. I want to thank everyone for taking the time to come out. Everyone did speak to the same item, and just as a heads-up, council will be addressing that as soon as we process through the consent calendar. So with that, Consent Calendar is a compilation of items that the council has worked on outside of the main city council meeting, but at the committee level. Had an opportunity to receive presentations, ask questions, and have discussion, and these items have all passed out of those committee meetings without any controversy. Tonight, we have items A through J. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I can make a motion to approve the consent item A through J.
Second.
A motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion carries 6-0 with that the consent agenda is passed. Item number nine is other business. Tonight, council will be hearing under other business, an ordinance to repeal and replace Chapter 8.09 of the Kent City Code with a new chapter entitled Camping on Public Property. With that, I'm going to turn it over to our chief administrative officer to set the stage, and then we will hear from our deputy city attorney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So as council knows, two weeks ago, staff presented the camping ordinance. And, and then following that presentation, you heard some comments during other business of the last council meeting. We've also heard a lot of comments tonight. Following last week, or the council meeting a couple of weeks ago, staff got to work, and you will notice in your packet, you have some revisions to the camping ordinance. Our deputy city attorney, Christina Shuck, is going to go over those in just a minute, but I want to just stress a couple of things and remind council and the public about what, what we're, what we're doing here and what the impact will be. First off, I want to be clear that if the council passes this ordinance, the city of Kent is not going to go out and do massive sweeps of camps right away. That's not what this is intended to do. Our police department and our human services staff will continue to take the approach they've always taken. They'll be out there, they'll be making contact, they'll be establishing relationships, they'll provide resources, and they'll encourage individuals to accept shelter. This ordinance is prepared in a way that's intended to balance the needs of individuals with, who are experiencing homelessness, with the requirement of the city to preserve the investments it has made to the general public, which includes parks, streets, sidewalks, our, our economic development resources, et cetera, to ensure that those are available as intended when this council establishes budgets and approves projects and contracts that we work on. I also want to remind council that during the presentation, Sergeant Kelso, who's been with this department for a long time, and he's worked on this issue for quite a while, he said, and I'm just going to quote what he said, he said, and this was in answer to some questions, "They had never had a time where we were not able to shelter somebody." He said that. Number two, people virtually never take shelter. He said that, too. And when he was asked for a number, he said it was well into the 90th percentile that people refused shelter. That's what this ordinance is going to give us leverage to deal with. And, and the sad fact is, some people need that push to, to make the choice to change the situation they're in, and that's what this will provide. I can tell you that, based on the experience, and, and I can tell you, when I was city attorney, I worked in this world with Dan Button Show and the group, and Commander O'Reilly back in, in that time. And I, I can say with confidence that 100% of the people who are willing to accept shelter will not be prosecuted under this ordinance. That's not the intent of, and the goal of our police department and staff is to encourage people with this, with this leverage to get the treatment they need. So Christina's going to present that ordinance. I do want to really quick comment on Mr. Bremer, I think his, his name, who spoke. Just want to make sure people understand that the city of Kent does prosecute theft cases under $1,000, those are misdemeanors, they're within our jurisdiction, and we prosecute hundreds and hundreds of them every year. It's, I think, he was speaking to felony prosecution, which this city has no authority or effect over. So our city does prosecute those cases, we, we have, and we will continue to do so. But with that, I'm going to turn it over to Christina, and she can explain the, the changes to the, to the ordinance.
Good evening, I'm Christina Shuck, deputy city attorney, and I have a brief presentation for you tonight that will provide you, again, with an overview of the ordinance itself, and then explain some of the changes that were made since the October 4th meeting. Oops, I'm sorry, Kim, you did it for me. So overall, the ordinance before you continues to prohibit camping outside of designated areas citywide. And so the citywide camping ban has been in, you may recall, has been in place since 2000. Now, the ordinance before you focuses in on the environmental harm you've been hearing about and the disruption caused by unlawful camping. And it does this by identifying sensitive locations in particular. So those are portions of parks that are designated for a particular purpose, there are critical areas that serve an important environmental function, like wetlands, steep slopes, and there are also city-owned buildings where business is conducted by the public. The ordinance also addresses related harmful activities that are like setting fires, littering, and destroying vegetation, and provides tools for camp removal and enforcement. And the provisions throughout the ordinance always allow discretion and, and offers to connect individuals to services. So that, I'm sorry, get the technology down here. So the updates, some updates have been made since October 4th. So as you've seen in the packet, staff has made some changes since the October 4th meeting. You see red, you'll see them noted in red lines and highlighting, and it does probably look like a lot of red lines and highlighting, but really, there are just a few substantive changes. So some of the changes that you'll notice, there are a lot more detailed recitals. And so what we did was take a lot of the information you heard on October 4th from the presentation by staff and put that into the recital, so you'll have all your information in one spot. And also, we spent some time streamlining and fine-tuning the language throughout. And the substantive changes, just as a quick overview, but we'll talk about them in more detail, those are the updates to the sensitive areas in Section 030, and then some updates to enforcement and penalties. So the next slide is, going to look more closely at Section 809-030. And so these are the provisions, so of course, there's the general prohibition on camping on public property and outside of designated areas, that's within this section. And then here, again, we've, we've designated these sensitive areas or incompatible uses. And so you remember, in the October 4th version, there were three main categories. We just kind of talked about those, the portions of parks developed for specific purposes, like playfields and trails, the critical areas, the city-owned buildings. And now, one change is that we've added two more categories. So those two categories are unopened city property, that's, that means property the city owns that's not open to the public, that's marked no trespassing. And then the next category is streets and sidewalks. Additionally, the enforcement piece has changed since October 4th, and, and that specifically relates to the authority to arrest and file charges under this particular section 030, that's for unlawful camping. So when there is no available shelter, the ability, the authority to arrest and file charges is suspended. That includes insensitive areas. However, in these sensitive areas, the persons, if persons are camping, they shall be required to immediately remove their camps upon request. Again, those are in those five categories of sensitive areas. They wouldn't be arrested or, or charged if there's no available shelter, but they would be required to, to remove their camps immediately. Some changes were also made to 809-070, which contains the provisions for unlawful camp removal. Again, just as we've said, immediate, allows for immediate removal within sensitive areas. And then in all other areas, it's removal after notice, and that is with at least 48 hours' notice. And again, the opportunity is given to individuals to remove their property and even to temporarily store it if needed. There's information, the officers will help connect folks with services, information will be provided for all of, for the storage and services. So, and finally, changes were also made to the last section 808 on penalties. And so the changes made were that fines will not be imposed as a penalty, and the city will not object to deferred options. So that means deferred prosecution or deferred sentencing if a defendant, an individual qualifies for those programs. And then the city will also, finally, the city will also not object to a request to vacate a record of conviction under this, under this chapter. So that concludes my presentation, and staff is available to answer questions.
Thank you, Christina. Council, any questions? Okay, I am not seeing any. With that, a motion would be in order regarding the ordinance to repeal and replace Chapter 8.09 of the Kent City Code with a new chapter entitled Camping on Public Property. Is there a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I can make a motion. I move to adopt ordinance number 4443, repealing Chapter 8.09 of the Kent City Code, replacing with a new chapter which prohibit camping and other activity that causes environmental damage and harm public property, and set forth the circumstances under which unlawful camping is enforced.
Second.
A motion and a second, is there any discussion? Councilmember Fincher.
I, as we talked about last time, as I mentioned, this is still only half the answer we heard from several people tonight. It said before that we still need housing. We heard that housing is not available for people who the police department runs into, but those are not the only people who are unsheltered in our neighborhood. We have to also remember there are people who they don't run into, such as the mother and son who were in here at the 4 o'clock meeting, who needed shelter. So I, we've talked about tiny homes, we've talked about other forms of shelter, we need someplace, we've talked about going with the, to the county, or at least suggested going to the county and, and saying that we need more done, especially with winter coming. So I want to reiterate that and make sure that we remember that more is still needed, this is only half of a solution.
Councilmember Corr.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with Councilmember Fincher, and thank you, Christina, and thank you, Tammy, for these updates to our ordinance. I think we, we agree with these, these changes since the original ordinance was presented. And we certainly have, Councilmember Fincher, I think, countywide, we are working on housing options, and I hope we'll be able to make some progress. And I think I'd like an update, if possible, in six months or nine months, to see how much progress we're actually making with this ordinance, if we're, how many individuals we're helping, and if we were able to, you know, have that increase in individuals actually taking resources, I think it'll be really helpful, and if we are actually enforcing. Thank you.
Absolutely. Council President Bois.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I would also comment on the, on the updates here, and this is based on, two weeks ago, we have people come and they were speaking and made some recommendations, so we listened to them, and I think these reflect some of the changes that were spoken about two weeks ago. And Councilmember Corr, I was going to propose that every quarter, I'd like to get a report, you know, to us to kind of just see how things are going and the progress we made. And yes, I agree with Councilmember Fincher, yes, we need more housing, but at the same time, I think there's a lot of people who need help, seeking help, and I think those that need help and seeking help may not be aware, this is going to give them opportunity to be able to find places for them. And of course, there's people who don't want help, and, you know, we'll have to deal with them in a very compassionate way, you know, to try to help them eventually get where they need to go. But I think this is definitely a step in the right direction. We had our taxpayer, paying taxpayer money, you know, for parks, sidewalk, streets, and everything, and it's an investment, right? So I think it's our responsibility and our duty to make sure we take care of your investment. And at the same time, we will make sure that, you know, the people who are camping out, like I say, will show compassion, and we'll help them, show them the right way. So, thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Council President. Councilmember Fincher, did you have another comment?
Just because vacating was not a term that I was, I was aware of earlier of what it meant. And one of the concerns that was voiced last time was criminalization of homelessness, being unsheltered, not being able to get employment, not being able, being able to get into an apartment when you have something on your record. What that is saying is that they may come and have that removed, request have that removed, and the prosecutors are not going to stand in the way of that.
Councilmember Larmour.
Yeah, I, yeah, I want to think the staff are going back and making the changes that were requested to deal with the criminalization. I think that's an important improvement that we've made here, and I will be supporting this tonight. I think I mentioned it last time, I've been out in those camps with, with the officers, and, you know, there's a saying that, you know, the Puget Sound starts here, and I think it's, we can't ignore the damage that's being done, and what I, you know, what I've seen in the camps, and what some people have described, and, and all of that, that waste and that, the drug waste and paraphernalia, that all is making it into our critical waterways. And so I, I think addressing these five critical areas, I, I think we just have a responsibility to not just our, you know, not just the city of Kent's public domain, but the whole regional domain and water system relies on, on this measure.
All right, thank you. Council, any additional comments before we call for the vote? Okay, I am not seeing any. With that, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Council, I want to say thank you. I think that Council President Bois summed it up beautifully with the statement, sometimes people need help getting help. This represents a tool for that. Councilmember Larmour, to your point, we are responsible, even if we were unable to hold the Orca Recovery Event last weekend.
Right.
We are, we are very, all joking aside, we are very responsible in the protection of our environment, our natural resources, making sure that they are available, and our, and our investments in our public spaces. So I just want to say thank you to the council for taking this action tonight and providing us as a city with another tool to help people seek help. With that, we are going to move on. We have one bid this evening, the Lindenthal Generator Replacement, and joining us is Chad Behren, our Public Works Director.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Lindenthal Sewer Pump Station, I know we've given a number of presentations on the sewer system and pump stations throughout the city. This is one of our major pump stations, it serves a significant portion of southeast Kent, between 160th Avenue Southeast and Kent Kangley. And it was a bid for replacement of the existing generator, which is just over 20 years old. This is what'll be used if we end up losing power for an extended period. Very important to make sure we don't have any sewer backups in that area. So we were recently opened bids, had six bids that came in a little high, which is, we're starting to see, we keep hearing about inflation, pump, and at the store, we're seeing in our bids, more recent bids, we've come in pretty close, but this one's about 22% higher than the previous estimate. However, it's also the bids at the low end were relatively tight, so we do recommend award. And I'm fairly prepared for any questions.
All right. Any questions for Chad? We heard a presentation earlier in one of our public hearings about the cost of construction going up, and I think that that's exactly what we will continue to see, is that making its way into all of our, all of our bids coming through. Council, is there a motion regarding the generator replacement?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move to award the Lindenthal Generator Replacement Project to Saratoga Craftsman, Inc., DBA Bainbridge Island Electric, in the amount of $241,711.34, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the city attorney and Public Works Director.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. We do not have, thank you, Chad. We do not have an executive session this evening, so that brings us to the bottom of our agenda. Again, I want to thank everyone for their participation in the meeting this evening, council for the conversation, and with that, we are adjourned. Have a wonderful evening.